Everybody, we're going to get started with Ojai City Council Special Meeting, 6:00 PM, Wednesday, August 26, 2015. Could I have roll call?
Councilmember Clapp.
President.
Councilmember Wirick.
Here.
Councilmember Haney.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Blatz.
Here.
Mayor Lar.
Here. Could Councilmember Clapp lead us to the Pledge of Legions?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Today, we have a number of closed sessions, including the discussion item. We are going to start with the closed session, but before that, we're going to go to public comments, and I do have two speakers cards. Our first speaker is Bob Daddy.
Thank you. I wasn't able to make last night's meeting, so I want to speak as a representative of Ojai Flow to some direct questions that were unanswered by Golden State Water. Four and a half years ago, Ojai Flow protested the fact that we did not qualify as an urban water supplier because we did not use 3,000 acre feet of water, nor did we have 3,000 water hookups. At that time, in 2010, Golden State spent $65,000 to run a test that was invalid and unnecessary and not required. They're attempting to do that again now in 2005. Now, it's just a mere 25 bucks on everybody, but it's another $65,000. As a result of that protest and a result of Flow following up and not letting these guys go in our general rate case, because the communities know where their money went, we filed against this same issue. And it was interesting that a week after we got done filing, somehow Golden State realized that, gee, we're not a urban water supplier, and not only don't we have to cut back 36%, we don't have to cut back 25%. We just can't water more than twice. Here's the issue. I'll make it as simple as I can. If you pay $1,000 a year for water, they've already cranked up their rates anticipating the water, the RAM issue, the recapture. So what they will have done is something like, not quite exactly, but something like increase your rates 36%. So they'll increase your rates on the same usage to $1,360. If you then cut back the 36 cents percent like you're supposed to, then what will happen is you'll end up even with your $1,000, except we're exempt. So my understanding is, is that when questions were asked, they were not answered as to, when are you going to readjust your water rates? How long are you going to continue to estimate? And Mr. Haney, you ask a question. What are they going to do? It's really simple. I have a 303-page document, if you like, where they filed under this general rate case that they were going to continue to ask for millions of dollars to put into the system and lose over 10% a year in water loss for 2016, 17, and 18. Interesting. With the 35% that we've cut back and the 10% that they lose for water, it's pretty amazing what's going to happen on this RAM that they're still fighting us to recapture. We're still going to have to pay a portion of that pending the ruling, so we're not off of that. We're just not going to be penalized. What we need to know is, what are they going to do about adjusting the current bills? Because we haven't heard that. Okay, Rhonda is flashing me, so I need to move this up. The purpose here tonight is to make you aware of a few items that I wish the council would consider. I know this can't be spoken about tonight. I don't want to give you all the information. I don't want to tell the bomb maker how to build the bomb. We have, by default, Golden State as our representative, our advocate with the Water Resource Board. I think that needs to be adjusted. I think Flow needs to take over that responsibility. We have an outside lawsuit that has dominoed effect from one city to another, and that's the Channel Keepers, and that has some wide ramifications. And regardless of what you want to do, I wish you would at least discuss this thing in closed session, because this is something we don't want to wish we would have done something about when we had the chance after the train went.
Bob, if I could interrupt you for a second, because I'm intimately involved in the Channel Keepers lawsuit. The judge in San Francisco granted the Channel Island Gatekeepers' motion to strike the amended cross complaint today.
Oh, today?
Yeah, so everybody, then the cross complaint is out of the case.
Right.
I have a conference call with the counsel for Gatekeepers on Friday morning, and I'll know more about it, but the judge ruled that the cross complaint was going to be stricken.
Okay. I just wanted to make counsel aware that, you know, we need to keep our thumb on the pulse. I was at Gassitas Board Meeting today and urged them to proceed as quickly as possible with the imminent domain. We have by legislative act, the OBGMA and Golden State is a board member legislatively, is my understanding, as the franchisee. And that is something that we'd better start on immediately, because that will take a long haul. We may find that they no longer supply water for us, but yet are on the board. I really wouldn't want that to happen. And again, the estimated billings, all we can do is we can file a complaint with the Public Utility Commission, because they have been reading water meters here since 1967, and there's no reason for them to estimate the bills. People are getting enormous bills. And Ryan Blatz will show up at one of the later sessions tonight, where he can go into detail. I just wanted to give you a general overview. He'll be able to go into detail. And Ojai Flow, well, you know, I'm kind of reticent to say, hey, we'll do everything, but right now with a couple of these, I'm not really sure who's best equipped, who's been involved in this, and who understands the process and who has the most of the answers. So if it is the pleasure of the council to have us do a few more of these other items, we're certainly equipped to do that. With that, thank you very much.
Thank you, Bob. And we will be communicating with Ryan and yourself what we decide. I appreciate the information.
A clarification maybe from Rob. I'm not sure if Rob would know, but is the seat on the OBGMA a chartered seat? In other words, is that seat given to a person that's the water purveyor for the city?
I can answer that.
Yeah, we both have read the legislation.
Okay.
So we can, I can, we can tell you.
Yeah, well, basically, yes. And when this, when, when the imminent domain occurs, then things will change. But until then, they're a member of the board.
Actually, that's not correct. Okay? The legislation is, the reason that they had a default sustainability agency position is they were designated by legislation.
Well, that's correct.
And the board composition is designated by legislation.
Correct. But that is not being changed as of today.
Yeah, but in order...
The board has chosen to wait.
To have the board change requires a change of legislation.
Correct.
To petition the state legislature to change it. And so I think what Mr. Daddy is talking about is that we need to think about what we would want to try to do in terms of influencing that legislation for the citizens.
Through OBGMA.
Yeah.
No, OBGMA, it...
That's who you would go through.
Who would be petitioning the legislature to make the change?
Anybody can petition the legislature. The OBGMA currently could petition. We could petition, because we are also on there by, I mean, anybody can petition for what they want the legislature to do.
Okay.
That's correct, but I think that it's most appropriate to go through the OBGMA. And if the city wants to approach this OBGMA and request, put in a request, I think that's a proper channels to do it.
It would be better for us to come together on that.
I just want to make sure that I bring this back, because we are in public comment. This is not an agenda item.
Should we agendize this?
And we could talk about, I think we'll be...
I think we could talk about it in closed session.
And I'll refer to our city attorney to see if that's correct or not.
But it is in the legislation.
Okay.
Or else we could bring it up in agenda.
We have many discussions about it, believe me.
A portion of that conversation that we had in closed session, the ultimate decision whether to seek an amendment to legislation and how best to do so would be begun in closed session, and I think would result in an open session decision to make a formal request of our representatives in Sacramento. That, of course, would have to be agendized for a future meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Daddy. I got, second speaker is Mr. Miley, and I got two speakers cards for you. Are you intending to stay to this, for the 7 o'clock City Council Goals and Priority? Or do you want to make your comments now? Because we're going to go into closed session after your comments.
Oh, I would like to make my goals, comments now.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay. Bill Miley, North Signal Street, Ojai. I have two public comments to make. In the framework of always doing better, I make the following comments. I recently became an official birthday reporter for my Ojai Retired Men's Club, so I get to write up the birthday paragraphs for the guys that are having birthdays this month and next month and so on. So my comments have to do with writing. Okay? So last week, when I got the second dwelling unit compliance mailer, this one, okay, I read it over, and I read it over several times. And I have some suggestions, and I understand there will be more mailers sent out before the end of the program. So I have a couple of suggestions for the next edition. Well, I have one major suggestion, and it has to do with the consequences of not complying, or the consequences of not doing anything but just keeping, running your second dwelling unit that's not permitted. So I think it would be a punchline and necessary, and maybe that's designed for the second mailer. I don't know, because I didn't talk to anybody here. So I would suggest something like this. The last sentence reads, "Information provided..." Oh, wait a minute. Oh, yeah. "Information provided to the ombudsman is confidential and will not be provided to the city or other agencies," period. End paragraph, and then it says, "If you have questions, call." Okay? And I would suggest, on the next edition, we add something like this. Either way, if your second dwelling unit does not get permitted after December 21st, the city's code enforcement officer will be directed to cite such dwellings as being in violation of the city's building code and will be required to cease using it as a dwelling unit, period. Have a good day. No, no, we don't put that down. Okay. You know, this has to, this is really friendly. It's nice and friendly, and the word encouraged is used in here, but there's no punch to it. And, you know, I'm saying, oh, these guys are really nice. They're just letting me know, but forget it, because there's no consequence. So anyway, I think I made my point. The second one is, I don't see anybody here, really. And when I got an email yesterday that the agenda for this meeting was being modified or amended, I said to myself, what meeting? So I went to the City Council Agenda page, and it was 8:25, which was last night's meeting. So I don't, it wasn't out posted as far as I was concerned, and maybe that's why we don't have a lot of people here, because I think goals and priorities are really important, and I have a couple of suggestions. So anyway, that's my second comment. So can I go on to goals?
Yes.
Okay, great. I got three. And I think you, the council has heard these before. If I remember, the goals and priorities document that was originally crafted was in January this year. Is that right? Okay. Now, maybe it's been changed. And if I also remember, there was only one statement in there that related to affordable housing, and that was in the city manager's responsibilities. There was nothing in community development. And I'm pleased that there was at least something there. So I would like to see a tighter statement about affordable. I would like to see, work on and complete an affordable housing project this year. Put in someplace, okay? When we had the 1105 dust-up up there that went on for months, our North Signal Street group came up with some thoughts about how to prevent things like that from happening that we don't want to have happen in the future. So we had suggested to your body that a new ordinance be crafted, and I know the City Council discussed that, a new ordinance be crafted requiring a permit of some sort for all walls and fences. And I remember Councilmember Blatz talking about, maybe it could be a checklist. It doesn't have to be a formal permit with $200 or whatever, but it had to, it had to require the person to go through and find out what the city required, and the city to find out what they were going to do, and then build your fence. Okay. We believe that if that had been in place, the 1105 North Signal wall would never have been built the way it was built. And this is what I know. Maybe it's not right? Okay. No names. The contractor came down to the city and asked for a permit to build a fence. That's what I heard. The city said, you don't need a permit to build a fence. Contractor went away, went back up the hill, and started to build a wall. And he built a wall with a footing, which ended up being a retaining wall, which has, requires a building permit and a zoning permit. He built it without nothing, I mean, without anything, okay? So we got involved, I think that was like in June or July of last year. So we got involved, you know, we came down here, we talked to the guys and all that stuff, you know? And finally, after meeting a couple of times with the Community Development Department, a permit was given to them in November, when the wall was practically 90% finished. Okay, you got a permit. And we lost, and that was it. We couldn't do any more. That was it. It didn't get a zoning permit, which would have required a masonry wall to be aesthetic and covered, you know, and mason, whatever they do to make them less warehouse-like. Okay? So we, I would like that to be one of your possible, I would like to see the City Council craft that and finally get to that, so we don't have any more of this stuff of, oh, I didn't know I had to do that. Okay. And then the last one is, 1105 North Signal was 10 acres, and they built it piecemeal. And you all know now that it's up for sale. Okay? So we have a big square, yellow square in the corner with a climbing wall in it, I guess. That's, that's there. Okay? Big yellow square. So when we were talking with the Community Development Director, I picked up the fact that some cities have what is a design review permit requirement for any residential property over about an acre. And I believe that there's like 10 or 15 of those in the city. We have them on North Signal Street on the east side of Signal. There's like 10 acres there, or more, and that's all residential. So if you had a requirement that those parcels would be, would have to go through a design review permit, we wouldn't have all this stuff going on like we had on North Signal Street, and we would never have it again, in my opinion. So, thank you.
Thank you, Bill. And I will make sure to look into having our meetings posted in the agenda, on the agenda.
It's posted right here, August 26, 2015, Special Meeting.
Rhonda, can you confirm that it was... Rhonda, can you confirm that it was posted yesterday?
They were posted, so, yeah, they were posted on the website. They were posted on the door.
I do want to say, though, when I use this, one thing I find really, and this is just some real quick feedback on the website, the problem with it is that when you first go in to the city website in the phone app, it has quick links, and it has contact us, second unit compliance, city manager's weekly update, co-compliance, community club, public work, I'm sorry, public work records request.
But it doesn't say agendas. So people have to know to go to this little thing up here in the left-hand corner, they have to understand that this is kind of the new methodology in websites and on phone applications. So I think that we should put on the quick links on the homepage. It should be potentially contact us, upcoming agendas or agendas or something, so that it's right there rather than people having to find it, because this is very tiny, at least on the phone. Now, honestly, I don't know what it looks like on an iPad or on a computer, because I always access it from my phone. There may be the same problem there, too. So that might be what happened to Bill.
Maybe. Well, thank you.
One more comment.
Yeah, just one more comment, then we got to move to closed session, so.
I used my iPad in my house with a Wi-Fi, and I went to the city's Agenda page where the minutes are, and I looked at that yesterday, and I'm not blind. It was not there, folks, from my point of view. It was, August 25th was the last posted meeting. Now, maybe, no, no. My, the technology in my house doesn't fail.
We'll just make sure to make, to note that in highlights, so it won't happen in the future, but we really do need to go into closed session now.
That's fine. One last point to kind of make my point is there's nobody here except these other two folks, three. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miley. With that, then, I'm going to go into closed session conference with legal counsel, initiative We're back from our closed session. We do have a short summary. Mr. Summers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The City Council met in closed session to consider an item initiated, of initiating litigation. Direction was given to staff and to counsel. That's it.
Thank you. And at this time, I'm going to change the order of our agenda. We're going to move the discussion item to, should we just do all the closed sessions or should we do just one? We're just going to do one, Legal Counsel Existing Litigation, name of case, general rate case, Golden State Water, California Public Utilities Commission, A14-07-006. And I'm going to move that ahead of the discussion item. Do I have any, any comments from counsel or?
No objection.
No? No objection? Are we going to have a brief summary?
I expect we... We may have a report after that item.
Okay, great. Thank you. Right now, so I'm going to...
It's amazing.
You ready? Okay, we're locked. Okay, we're coming back from closed session. Item three, conference with legal counsel existing litigation, name of case, general rate case, Golden State Water, California Public Utility Commission. Is there a report or?
The report out is that the council met in closed session to consider the case cited by the mayor and gave direction to staff and counsel. Thank you.
Great. We're going to go back to the discussion items, City Council Goals and Priorities. Discuss City Council Goals and Priorities and provide direction to staff. This special meeting, I requested a special meeting, because I thought that it would be, first of all, it's a good practice to always revisit your priorities. And my second thought process was that we're getting a lot of requests for different priorities, and we're running, we're limited with time. And I just wanted to highlight the number of meeting dates that we have, and we already have ongoing projects. And I just wanted to see if there was more priorities on certain amount of future items or ongoing projects, or if we just wanted to stay with the ongoing projects, or if we wanted right now to draft a tentative, potential agenda. For, for example, September 22nd, I think we already have some solid discussion items. In my opinion, we might have too many. October 13th, October 27th, November 10th, I'm assuming right now, but we haven't formally counseled November 24th, but I'm assuming that meetings can be counseled. December 8th is a new, I guess, appointment or a new of the mayor. So that's the last meeting of the year. I don't know if we want to have anything heavy on that, on that City Council Agenda night.
Three cancellations.
Yeah, and then the December 22nd. Three cancellations, yes. Because September 8th is canceled. So I guess I'm, I just want to take some, some consensus from the council on what we want to put on the agenda. And if you noted, I've kind of made a chart of ongoing projects, and I've divided in with future items, which there are 31. Ongoing projects, there's, in my opinion, 17. And this, this is all my doing. This isn't really consulting with, with staff. And so I'm more than happy to take feedback or change things if things are not correct. There's also completed items. I decided to put that on, and I did a little, I, I, how do you say? Italic, italicized font on ones that I thought, I just added a completed item, but they're not completed, they're, but were, they're big projects, which are vacation transient rentals, they're ad hoc cultural resources in affordable housing, that I think could be put on some of this year's agenda.
Personally, just looking at completed items list, and if you just took leaf blower, vacation, ad hoc, and affordable.
Funny.
That's funny.
I'm sorry, I don't, I just don't, I don't know how we could even touch the right-hand side.
That's funny.
And there's a couple, there's a couple of the things that you highlighted on the right-hand side that are in conjunction with these, but these are four major issues.
Yes.
I just, with a lot of continuation in between them.
Okay. So I, and again, if nothing on the right-hand side, we agreed to not add to any of these meetings of this year, I just want to make sure that I add in the right, the correct date of the council. So for example, do we know when the ad hoc cultural resource is going to put a recommendation which, which agenda, which City Council agenda?
One thing is, one thing is, we did direct staff to update the tree ordinance, and Rob said it was probably going to be coming back in October. So I think that should be, because the work is essentially already in progress, I think that that should be completed, and particularly because of the drought situation, I think it's really important we get that done to make sure that we get standards in place to protect the trees from over pruning, which is one of the things that we were going to do in the update.
And then we'd also eliminate some of the language in the ordinance of what requires...
Yeah, like you can't, you have to mitigate taking out a Mexican family.
Are you saying to add that to the other four?
Yes. Because Rob said that it's almost completed, yeah.
And I, I would concur. It's on, it's in process already.
Yes, right.
Well, because we brought it up at the beginning of the year, then we just kind of tabled it. We never revisited it.
Yeah, what about fences and walls?
And then, that was my other question, was fences and walls and hedges.
And the second dwelling unit. Those are three.
We did, we did second units. The conforming.
These are the, yeah.
This is new dry, on the right-hand side. He has 20 and 26 and 27, or update tree ordinance, fences, walls, and hedges, and second dwelling unit. Those are three that I think...
We're talking about conforming on 27.
It sounds like we're already in process, right?
And I would say, yeah, way 27 is listed as a misnomer. It's not deed restrictions. It's updating to be, the conforming to be consistent with the non.
Yeah, yeah, it's not...
No, I put that because it came up when we were talking about deed restrictions. So I just, I just put that as my personal, it had nothing to do with it.
I'll suggest we just eliminate that.
Was that in relationship to vacation?
Yeah, just so that I can remember where that came from. So yeah, please, please, yes, please scratch it off.
And the Planning Commission is ready to roll on, on looking at the conforming.
So we'll just put in on, we'll just put that aside, and we'll say, Planning Commission, whenever they come up with recommendations to the council, we'll put it on the...
Yeah. Some of these things can start at the commission level. We won't see them till next spring.
Right.
And some of these will start at the commission level that we have to give... And, and some of these will start at the commission level that we have to give approval to. And, and a perfect example of it could be, I, I ran into an issue last two, three months that a lot of people were, came up to me and said, we have the tennis court slash indoor soccer where a lot of the soccer players were playing on tennis courts. So I, I, this, I kind of threw it to, to Rob saying it could, the parking recreation commission?
Yeah, they can take it up.
Take that up.
Right. We can, we can assign things to the commissions. I think that's great.
Yeah.
We should.
So I, and, and if it's agree, it's, if, if the council agrees, then we'll just refer it to the parking recreation commission and see if it even needs to come to council.
There's another one here, number seven on ongoing projects. That also is something that now has been direct, staff has been given direction on.
So, so actually...
You trying to get a word in edgewise here, Rob?
Everyone, yeah. The question I have is, you know, the goal, as it was stated in the, in the last goals round, was to focus on the high priority ones, not to enforce all vacant buildings.
Right.
So if, if, maybe we should clarify that.
Well, I, I, I don't take it that way. I don't see that they're mutually exclusive.
But, so if the council wants us to enforce all vacant buildings, then I need to initiate that as a...
Well, here, here's my point on that, okay? We are, in order to fully implement the vacant building ordinance, we need to implement a fee schedule.
True.
Before we, before it's even implemented and decide whether or not we want to just leave it alone or change it.
That was going to be my next point is that, and that's...
And so I guess what I'm trying to say is implementing the vacant building ordinance is a little different from whether or not we have something in place we think is enforceable.
Right. So, so updating the vacant building ordinance and dealing with the fees is going to BAB on the 8th and then coming to council on the...
And I would leave it at that, just updated in fees.
September 8th would go to BAB.
Right, yeah.
We really haven't, what we discussed tonight had nothing to do...
Exactly. Had nothing to do with it. So again, that's a, an assignment to be a B, updating.
Right. And we're working on that.
And we do have to keep in mind that what we, what we, directors have to do tonight is going to take staff time. And that's all part of the prioritization is making sure that we don't overload staff.
So, so just, but, but the other thing is, in addition to having just limited number of hours, we have a limited amount of expertise. And the reason I brought to you what I brought to you tonight is to be more effective and you know, for a reasonable amount of money, we can do the high priority ones. I think if, and I think we can update the vacant building ordinance. That's already in progress and happening. If you want to have a broad, if you want to focus on all the other vacant buildings that are out there, that's a...
No.
Okay.
No, I think we just need to get something in place and get the update. Period. Period.
I think we're focused in on the properties that we need to be focused in on and we just have to update the ordinance.
Exactly.
You may get a different recommendation from BAB, but you can deal with that when it comes forward.
Well, that's, that's the process. That's the process. And could we mark 26 and 27, for example, as assignments that we're giving to the PC?
Wait, could you, could you repeat that again, sorry?
Uh, mark 26 fences, walls and hedges policy and second dwelling units conforming as assignment we're giving to P, uh, planning commission?
So I do have a comment on that. So there's a relationship between the neighborhood planning and the fences, walls and hedges. And I'm really thinking that the neighborhood planning is the process that we're going to go through on the fences, walls and hedges. So I wouldn't list those as separate things right now. I'd keep them in the same...
Okay, incorporate them, but it's all, it's all associated with the planning commission.
Well, we did talk about that before. We weren't sure if we were going to actually take that direction.
It may also, should also be routed to the historic preservation commission because they have a significant concern about certain walls.
So, so the neighbor, the neighborhood planning, we're inviting all the commissions to.
Good.
BAB, planning commission, HPC, even arts commission and PRC.
Well, how about, how about...
And, and that'll lay a, hopefully lay a foundation upon which we can then develop whatever ordinances we want to develop.
Okay, so why don't we just say that, you just leave it alone and, and just say that's, that's part of complete streets and that process that's already in place on 26, but do assign second dwelling units conforming permits to the PC to review.
I agree. On that, so 26 already had, are we still then going to be enforcing that ordinance if we're going to come in? Because that was the direction last night that I got.
So there was a, so there was a memo that I wrote after we had a discussion of this some time ago that talked about how we were going to enforce and it's based primarily on safety concerns. So we're, we're probably being more aggressive right now on, on hedges because we were lax earlier, but walls, you know, if, if things happen, we, we will, in, in the field, we will...
So we're only, we're only enforcing the ones that have safety implications.
Well, new ones. If someone, if someone starts to build a new one in the improper...
Well, are in existing hedges.
New ones and existing hedges. In other words, the code enforcement folks are prioritizing citing existing hedges that present safety issues that are within the traffic triangle.
Do we run into any legal...
And, and they're issuing stop work orders on someone who starts a new wall without a permit.
Yeah, that, that I seen, I, I just want to ask the question because I want to make sure, is there any legal implications that the ci, that the city could have by enforce only selecting a certain part of a current ordinance versus the whole?
No, we have prosecutorial discretion in the code enforcement context to cite what the city decides to cite. And while I have the mic, another point to note is it's on the current burner, is the historic preservation commission, per council's direction and per the commission's direction has, is, has an ongoing ad hoc committee creating a procedural update to the historic, historic preservation ordinance that is actually on my desk to finish drafting. Um, and I couldn't, oh, there it is. Sorry, number nine.
It's on number nine.
I was trying to find it. And that'll, we expect that to also come back this fall. I'm not sure exactly what date.
But that'll, that's going to, that's with historic preservation.
Yeah, it'll go to historic preservation commission first and then to council after the historic preservation commission.
I mean, to me, to that, that right there is definitely enough that we could put on the agenda. And I, I'm a little even worried that we're not going to be able to fit it all this year. Yeah, I, I'm pretty sure if this all comes, come back to us. I mean, that second dwelling unit...
But I think some of the things that are delegated to the commissions and the board, it may come back in spring, but at least it's, it's going on now.
Yeah, it is going on.
Yeah, that's certainly the case.
So I, I just had a, just a more of a philosophical question for the council is we have all these future items on the list. Should we develop just a, a, a process? I don't know if a procedure, I don't know if it has to be written, but if, if we're, if we just have this on our list and we're just going to keep bypassing or bypassing some of these items, is it worth it to have a current future list?
No.
Or is it just better to start one year, scratch it all off and then if we hear from the community, put it on there that year or, or do we, or do we evaluate, or do we rank these as maybe next year's items?
I, I think, even though Betsy and I don't agree on much, I think maybe just scrapping and starting over except for certain designations is appropriate.
Or, or having, or having the council, every individual council bring it up at the beginning of the year.
Yeah, just do it like a zero-based budgeting where you start over, you know?
Because I, I just don't want to keep these items on there and never, just kind of a...
Actually, as you, again, as you review these, you know, like I just did quickly the ongoing projects and I just took the numbers and I tied them into associated groups on the, on what we're looking at to complete in the next four months. So, you know, three quarters of everything on the ongoing project list is already over here because they're in conjunction. If we did the same thing on the future items, there's a lot of these future items that are in conjunction with ongoing, which are in conjunction with, so we could do that. I'm not in favor of scrapping a list only because a, a, a list is part of our memory. So I could just see that, that list as something is moved over to planning or moved over to BAB or moved over here or dealt with, we just erase it or, you know, cross it off. And then we review it as part of the review in addition. But I don't know if I would discard it.
Well, okay.
There's a lot of thought in it, that's all.
Yeah, I just, you know, I...
And that was my struggle, I guess, with it too. I, I didn't know whether, it, it does help, I mean, some of it does help. Some of it, to me, some of the items don't necessarily, in my opinion, have to do with, or I mean, it could in the future do with council decision, but for example, pesticides that we've heard over and over and over, I feel that could be dealt with a ministry, with, with staff level and, and, and implement, but I don't know. I, it could be, I could be absolutely wrong.
Mr. Mayor, I tend to agree with Commissioner Haney. It's a list and that's all it is. And it's a, it's a, a history of items that potentially we may want to work on.
Right.
I don't look at them as a priority. I don't look at them as prioritizing. I think we're going to create our own list at the beginning of the next fiscal year or whenever we do it.
Throw away the list, but you know, you don't perseverate on the list. It's there, we think.
I just, I'm a list person, so if I see it, I do have a Sunday maybe list, so I'll put all those items on there and then I'll look at him maybe once, six months.
But we as, we as a council are going to draw upon all kinds of, of things when we move issues to the, to the top of the list for staff and us to work on.
And there's things we don't...
And there's some things here that we may decide are important enough to do that. I mean, some of them are very important, but they're not, they're just there now. They're not really meaningful to me. The ongoing projects, a lot, like Commissioner Haney said, a lot of these can be incorporated over here. And some of them we're doing, the enforcement of all the, you know, we have all the vacant buildings. Well, yeah, that's an ongoing project, but right now we're working on the, we, we, at some point, we're going to have to rewrite the, the vacant building ordinance. But we're doing the new historic resources ordinance. Yeah, we're already looking at that. We're looking at, at the architectural resources. We're looking at an architectural resources map. And then once again, the building, the, the building, vacant building program. So this kind of thing, I think, is already over in, in this and a lot of places. And this is just a list there for historic.
You know, I'll, I'll give you just a quick, for instance, I took the ad hoc cultural resource and I threw in number two, archaeological review, number three, archaeological review policy, number 10, quick check process for archaeological resources, number 11, update archaeological resource map, number 17, cultural resources. So you see that?
And number nine.
Yeah, so I took, so I took all of those, put them into the ad hoc committee because we're already meeting and there's no reason that we shouldn't in that, in that...
This is what I was trying to get at. Let's at least edit and revise.
Right.
Okay, just along those lines. And also, we don't need two declines, you know, in the future items list. And 2013 building code, I mean, you know, that's, that's sort of, I mean, some of these things, like develop fence standards for arbor lot, that's part of complete streets. The same spirit that you're talking about. Why don't we get, why don't we each of us look at this thing for suggested as it edits and consolidation?
Okay.
And I agree. And, and this is my struggle since the beginning of the year, I have to admit, because some of these do overlap and, and we have to be conscious about that because that's, we, we do want them to overlap because we want the consistency of that issue.
I also think that we need to be able to address the ones that we want to give to commissions and then get some input back on, you know, should those commissions be looking at those items? Because a lot of this we can give to, to the commissions.
That's what they're there for.
Right. The only thing that I don't see on any of this list is anything with the community development. There's nothing on here regarding that and that's our, that's, all of us have assessed that's our weak link right now in, in our community.
Well, if you look at this future item, number eight, something we talked about.
Information landouts for, there's things like that in there.
Yeah, and, and actually we are...
Landscape and guidelines.
So that's an ongoing thing.
There's a number of things on, there's a number of things on the futures list that we're actually, will come forward during the next six months, but we are working on the planning applications.
The other, the other thing that I think that we haven't been paying particular attention to is how do we get the Native American resources, historic resources, married to our historic resources or our historic preservation commission? And are they, are they really the same? I mean, the historic preservation commission looks at historic buildings and landmarking and things like that, but really with, with, with the legislature, AP 52, it really is a historic resource. And somehow we've got to get our, our historic preservation commission involved in that, but I don't know whether there's going to be any pushback from the commission on that or not. I mean, they really don't look at it as that, as that being part of their responsibility.
Yeah, even though the Title IV is titled historical and cultural resources.
Right.
I, I do have a suggestion on that. I, I think that the egg hasn't quite hatched. You know, we've, we've got the ad hoc committee and we've also got consultations going on now. And I think we're going to learn a lot through that process and that we may get to a point where it makes sense to bring that issue up after the other, after that gets a little further.
And I agree. I was going to mention that too.
And the other thing is, is that the way that we have a liaison from the museum on that commission, we may want to have a liaison initially from the tribe. I think that would be the way to do it. And then if we have a vacancy, we can think about appointing somebody from the tribe onto the commission itself. But I think we ought to really think now about bringing, you know, some representative of the tribe as a liaison.
Maybe we should bring that idea to the ad hoc committee.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's something the ad hoc committee should be talking about.
I think that's a great idea.
No, I, I...
I think that's, the other point I'd note is that I would expect that the outcome of the ongoing still hatching ad hoc committee will likely be some kind of a document that I expect we will take to the planning commission and the historic preservation commission, ensuring that we get their voice and, and connect them back into the loop.
Right, absolutely.
I, I did, I mean, the, the more we talk about the needs in our community, the more ideas blah, blah, blah. But do we need a, I guess, as, as, going through this process, I'm, I'm learning and I'm trying to figure out in my head a system and, and I've been wanting to work with obviously my colleagues in reviewing these issues because I think that that's the only way we could get anything done is having a majority consensus on any of these items. So I, I guess in the future, I, we'll have to, or I'll be in support of finding ways to add to these future items and see how we could get them done without overwhelming our staff because we are limited, but we do have other tools and other organizations that we, that we could work with. And with that maybe, with that said, there was another idea that I had in terms of making us aware of all the other organizations that we're part of and having basically maybe a, a one sentence or two sentence verbal sharing of what we've learned or what's going on with especially, with certain organizations that we're a liaison to. For example, the sanitary district came up last night, the WADA OBGMA is a hot issue. We would, we would, we would, we would welcome any reports from that liaison or that voting delegate on that agency. I know that I'm part of a policy committee for SCAG. We have the animal meeting. So the, the, these are all ideas. I mean, I, I think that we could utilize in the future. I know we're dealing with a lot right now, but I, I guess just finding solutions, so. And with that, I, I think that any, any more comments, I mean, we have already a good amount of items that we've agreed on that we could put on our future agenda.
Well, the other thing is, is I think these that have already been implemented, I mean, just take them off here.
Yeah. No, and these were just showing a complete items status and I kind of mixed ongoing projects on here because I wanted to add the status of it. So I just wanted to also acknowledge of complete item, just to keep them alive and just to make sure that we, we know that they're being implemented, just kind of a, a mindset thing for a council to, to acknowledge.
But the way that I look at it is that once we've done something, why do we need to look at it again? It just seems like when you look at this list, if it started at the leaf blower, these are the things that are important for us to be paying attention to. And these above this, other than... And these above this, other than, you know, there's a little bit, the updated second non-compliant units guideline, there's still some more work to do. But other than that, everything above there has really been done, and, you know.
Okay, so I see what you're saying. Uh, yeah, I see what you're saying. Yeah, that, I mean, it's a good point, definitely. I, I, I agree with you, because leaf blowers isn't fully completed.
Right.
Yeah, I agree.
And then I think, uh, what, uh, Councilman Wirick said, is we kind of go through this and take what we think that belongs over here, like Councilman Haney did. And then I think we've probably got a pretty good list that's going to take us well into the next six months, if not longer.
So in three months, I'm passing, passing it to the next mayor? Okay, well, with that, then, I guess we'll, we'll move on to the next item, unless anybody else has any further comments? If not, then I appreciate your input and your feedback. Uh, it just, it makes me feel good that we're all agreeing on, on, on priorities.
Um, Mr. Mayor, I just want to compliment the mayor for focusing the council's attention on these, these projects and priorities and objectives that we've had, because I think, uh, as we, as we experience, it's so easy to get caught up in the moment of things and saying, all right, we're going to do this now, and it's like a, a bouncing ball sometimes. And I think that the, the way that the mayor's kept us focused on certain projects this year has been very helpful to the council, even though we still have a little bit of the, you know, emergency feeling on certain things. But all in all, we've pretty much kept in line with, with the projects that we outlined at the beginning of the year. And I just want to thank you for kind of focusing on it.
And Mr. Mayor, real quickly, just to update you guys, uh, Bill and I have scheduled a meeting for the 31st of August with the focus group for the vacation rentals. And then after that, uh, meeting, we will be coming back with the recommendations from the focus group, so that's moving forward. We feel the urgency, and it's one of the things that I think he and I both, well, that's something we agree on.
I just, uh, Mayor.
Yeah, Councilmember Haney.
The, you know, with anything, uh, for me, if I don't have a date, I just have a tendency to put it back in the pile. So why don't we all agree on when we want to give these back to you? Can we have them back to, to Mayor Savaro in two weeks?
Oh, yeah.
All of us?
And put dates on, what do you mean?
No, just give you our modified list.
Our edits.
And our priorities.
Our edits.
Yeah, thank you.
You in turn can put it on your Excel, and go for it.
I edit some suggestions to you in two weeks.
Great, thanks, I appreciate it, I would appreciate that. Thank you. Well, with that, I'm going to go to item number four, which is a closed session, uh, conference with legal counsel, initiative litigation, number of potential cases, two. Should I just announce that the fifth, uh, closed item is a performance evaluation city manager? And, uh, any reports on either, or no?
I don't think so.
I don't expect a report on either item.
Great, thank you.